I'm gonna go ahead and start the recording. We're at five minutes after ten on March seventeenth. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. This is a fairly lightly attended meeting today so far, so I guess we'll go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call roll for everybody that I have seen on this, on the call today. So I'll start with Arnold Whitridge.
Here, present.
Jerry Cousins.
It is. I'm also here in present.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Jerry. Kenneth Baldwin said he was gonna go. There you are.
Yeah, yeah. You know that movie The Birds? If I don't feed them, I'm always worried about going outside.
That's a valid concern, Kenneth. Thanks for being here. Tara Jones, Chesapeake National Forest.
Morning, everyone.
Lejean Hayman, Six Rivers National Forest.
Here, I'm sitting in for Kristen Lark today, so I'll be reporting out for her.
Excellent. Thank you, Lejean. Nathan Welker from the NRA.
Good morning. That's the first one I'd be attended with you folks. I'm looking forward to learning.
Thanks for joining us. And I see Sarah Icaridge, also from the Chesapeake National Forest National Recreation Area.
Good morning, everyone present. Can you hear me okay?
I can. We can. Thank you.
Good.
Ross Mullino. Ross raised his hand and is present. Carol Fall.
I'm here too.
Very good. Welcome, Carol. Jennifer Mata, BLM.
Good morning. How's everyone?
So far, so good. Thanks, Jennifer. And Randy Paris from the Washington Research and Training Center.
Good morning, everybody.
Did you make it out today, Randy?
Uh, there's a whole neighborhood work party attempting to make it to Weverville today, so hopefully we will get to town.
I think you're not alone in that. So I think it's kind of, uh, there's a lot of that going around up here.
Yeah, definitely. Hoping everybody's staying safe and warm out there.
Yeah, we're still hiking out too.
Thanks, Randy. And I believe that's all of us right now. And I, Larry Glass?
Yeah, I'm here and I'm sitting in for Bob Morris and Joseph Bauer, who just broke free yesterday after three weeks of being stuck there in Peanuts, so.
Oh, boy. Wow. Oh, thank you, Larry, for being on. How are things out your way?
Well, I haven't been able to go home for a long time. There's like six, seven feet of snow there, so.
Oh, boy. Wow. Well, thanks for joining us. I think that's, uh, that's it as far as I can see on the call today. Go ahead, Jim. Take her away.
All right, very good. Thank you, Kelly. Good morning, everyone. Great to see everybody once again. So we are gonna start off our meeting today with an item that you may recall that kind of surfaced towards the end of our meeting in January. So this restructuring collaborative meetings was a proposal that surfaced again towards the end of the meeting. And pretty sure it was in the context of responding to the proposal or the presentation, I guess. We heard from the Forest Service regarding their wildfire crisis strategy. And the, the proposal was that there's a sense that maybe some restructuring of our meetings is necessary to respond adequately to this wildfire crisis strategy. And I believe the implication there is maybe our current structure is, is not adequate, not sufficient to meet these anticipated demands. And it was further proposed that the facilitation team would take this on and come up with some new restructuring proposal that we would come back to the collaborative with. So Kelly and I did have an opportunity to discuss that and pretty rapidly concluded that we really didn't feel like we had enough information or direction guidance from the group at large. So hence, we are coming back to you to facilitate a broader discussion on that proposal. There really wasn't much discussion from the group at large when that proposal was made. I believe it was made by Nick. So this is, uh, yeah, this is our opportunity to help to facilitate this discussion amongst all of you present today such that we can garner more information from you, get more guidance and direction from you as it pertains to this proposal that some restructuring of how we conduct business. I believe the, the actual, yeah, new, a new way of business was Nick's word, so. With that, I'd like to open that up to you for discussion to give Kelly and I, as your facilitation team, some better understanding of what this restructuring proposal might entail. Unfortunately, it does not appear Nick is with us today, so we can't go to the source. But I think it is a valid question. And, and so what I'd like to hear from all of you this morning, we only have, what about? What time do we have? About a half an hour here on this agenda item, but what Kelly and I would need from you today, or would like to hear from you today is, number one, are you in agreement with Nick and the proposal that some restructuring of how we conduct business is warranted, is needed? And if you're in agreement with that, why? What, 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 what's the justification for that? What's the rationale for it? What is it that either the collaborative is being asked to do more of? Or what is it that is the perceived need that would not be met with our current structure? And current structure, I think we all understand right now is we kind of alternate. One month we meet in this type of forum, and then the next month we have a field tour. We just kind of leapfrog throughout the year. So by and large, we've got six, you know, in-person Zoom-type hybrid meetings and six field tours. So that's our current structure. So the proposal is that's not adequate and that some alternate structure is needed to meet this perceived need from the wildfire crisis strategy presentation that was given to us last meeting.
So, okay, I'd kind of like to jump in here.
Very good, Jerry. Yeah, take it away.
Yeah. First, I want to express some real disappointment that the facilitation team has taken two months to pose this question when it was asked that you kind of wrap your arms around and come up with some strategies. And if you needed more information, to reach out via email or some way, somehow. So having said that, I'd kind of like to ask Tara, what, what does she need? How can the collaborative function more effectively to help them? I mean, I think we all understood the, the reason they have so much money that has to be committed and want social license and other input from the collaborative. So I'd like to ask Tara, you know what you need. Tell us.
Tara?
Yep. Okay, I was just like, are you want me to go ahead and respond? So, um, the, the probably the biggest challenge I see is I, I, everything that we're having to do, we have to move very quickly on. It's illogical because it's, you know, it's us and we know that things tend to move slow, except for some reason in this particular arena with these priority landscapes, we are moving quickly. So I not only have to be working on what we're doing in twenty-three, but I, I very soon have to have a very good handle on what we're doing in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. I've, I really enjoy working with this group and I don't want to make those decisions, you know, in a vacuum or in a bubble, and I definitely want your input. So one really good example, if, if it hadn't been for the snow, I would have already needed to have a field trip out to the High End Palm project. And shortly thereafter, I would have needed a, a field trip back out to the Big Ranch project. And then, uh, you know, working with Sarah and her unit on the NRA, we would have needed, we'll need to start looking at trips. What, what do we want to look at doing out in the Highway Three corridor? So, um, and that doesn't mean that that's gonna get done in, in, you know, all in twenty-four or all in twenty-three, but to have, have the collaborative start to kind of look at those areas, do some of that, like our first trip out to Big Ranch, where we talked about, here are some opportunities, here's some things we can do. What do you guys think? I want to make sure that when I'm asked to make decisions about what we're doing in twenty-four and twenty-five and twenty-six and that I've, that I've gotten some, some input from all of you and that we're looking at those things on the ground. We all know that we get a lot more, we're more productive and it's, it's easier to, to literally see the forest for the trees when we're out in the woods looking at things. And so I, I need to, that's what I need from this group, is I need to be able to have more field trips and get out in the woods and, and look at some potential areas to treat and some potential treatments. And I don't want to speak for Sarah, so if she wants to pipe in, I know that's my need for much of the TRMU and the South Fork Management Unit, and I, and I would say, you know, Lejean can certainly weigh in for, for what the Mad River needs, but that's my need is I, I need to be able to get ahold of somebody and, and get out to the woods to go look at some things in fairly, you know, within a couple of weeks. If that's, you know, one, once every other month to the field won't, won't get it done for me. If that makes sense.
Very good. Thank you, Tara.
Yep.
Carol. Carol. Yeah, Carol.
Yeah, so I apologize. I missed the very end of the last meeting, but you already asked my question. That was, what is it that the Forest Service needs? And so I'm wondering if it's not possible to essentially reactivate the forestry subcommittee? You know, if, if what, if what the Forest Service needs, if what Tara needs is some informal feedback on projects they're considering, that's the forestry subcommittee, and I think they have a lot more flexibility maybe to meet more often, to do field trips more often. The rest of us, maybe like Ross and I, that don't do the field trips, that aren't, they're more recreation oriented than forestry oriented, you know, we, we probably, Sarah might correct me, but we probably don't need to meet, you know, on shorter timeframes and provide that informal input. And, and then the only other thing I thought was, you know, any formal input has to go to the board of supervisors, since we are a creature of the board. So if you're, if you're looking for informal input, I think, you know, just having field trips and all that would work. If you're looking for letters of support or formal letters, then that, we're stuck with the board of supervisors timeframe there. That was only my points I wanted to make.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else? Sarah?
Um, I agree with, I agree with what Tara brought up in terms of needing some kind of rapid input mechanism or just more sounding board opportunities. Just, I, I like the idea, I think of Carol, Carol bringing up the forestry committee again, like a sounding board that isn't a three-hour meeting would be great. You know, just something quick where we can engage on a topic and it's focused and we're, we're really moving the ball forward on a particular topic and not going over the whole list every time, I think would be really helpful for moving the priority landscape stuff forward. So, thank you. And, and from my standpoint, I, we're at a earlier phase in my piece of the priority landscapes with Highway Three, so it doesn't have to be immediately field-based right now, but I think absolutely that need will be there. But, but just in general, some, some shorter touchpoints, more quick turnaround would be good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Anybody else? One of the things that was suggested was that, and just to address Jerry's comment earlier, that was the question that I had been tasked to ask Tara, and I have not been able to connect with Tara this past month, so it's just between strict scheduling conflicts and, and weather and everything else that's been going on and lack of communicate, you know, lack of communication. It's been, you know, here in Weverville specifically, it's made it rather difficult to, to get to that place. So we hadn't had that opportunity yet just to speak about this specific question. But one of the things that was potentially recommended was that if we were to increase the number of meetings or field tours, that, you know, that there would be potentially, you know, you know, adding on, say, a first Friday additional field tour, you know, and I don't know if that'd be, you know, concurrent with the same month as these meetings. Not that we would have been able to get out in the field as it is, but, you know, that would certainly be something that we could look at. I, I don't know what the will of the group is with regard to that, you know, but that was, that was certainly something that was put out, I believe, by Bob Morris had suggested that as a potential way to increase the number of field tours. Larry?
Yeah, I wanted to chime in. I, I think that our current structure is fine. What we need to be able to do is become more nimble. So if Tara needs a vote, you know, a formal vote, then we need to call a special meeting and we can do it by Zoom. It's not like people gotta suddenly drive a hundred miles to a meeting at a moment's notice. You know, a forty-eight hour ahead-of-time notice of a special meeting to give a stamp of approval to an idea that we've already talked about in the field, that seems to be the expeditious way to go. It doesn't have to be on a Friday. It doesn't have to be a regular scheduled meeting. You have a special meeting where we give approval. And the other thing I would say is that as a member of the forestry committee, we've proven in the past that we're ready to go out in the field whenever Tara or, or Kristen needs us to go out in the field and, and take a look at what they want to show us. And, and I know that's still the case. We're, we're ready to meet whenever, you know, when the snow melts a little bit.
Great. Thank you, Larry. So there, sounds like there's another proposal that seems to be embraced, and that's the re-establishment of this forestry subcommittee that could serve in this more nimble, responsive way that appears as though that's certainly what the Forest Service is telling us they need. So maybe let's focus on that a little bit. Are, are there other proponents, advocates of the re-establishment of this forestry subcommittee to serve in kind of this more responsive, nimble way?
I don't think it needs to be re-established. It still exists. We never went away.
Okay, just.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, if you need a meeting, just send out an email. I mean, the forestry group, small work group, has been going out almost on, on every, somebody's always been on every field trip at every meeting. So there doesn't have to be a formal reconstitution of it. Just use it.
I'm a little.
So now this is, this is the, the differentiation, as I recall, there was a discussion and Arnold Whitridge brought up the same point that Carol Fall did, and I think what we're talking about is apples and oranges. There's the Field Break Work Group, and then there's the Forestry Committee. So I, is, are we talking about one or the other?
Well, it's the Forestry Committee, I think, and like Larry said, it's in place. Just send out an email.
And, and, and it has always been open to anybody that wanted to show up. I think that was Arnold's point. He wanted to make sure it was inclusive, but the reality is we've always opened it up to whoever can, can come on the field trip, so.
But, yeah, I think the differentiation is the Field Break Work Group is limited membership, and I think you would want to have the broader membership of the forestry subcommittee.
So is there an actual membership, Carol? Of the committee?
Okay, just, just to clarify, there is a Field Break Work Group. It is a smaller group that we get together and hash out controversial issues that come up amongst ourselves and then come forward with a position. The forestry group is more informal and it's open to everybody, and that's pretty much who goes on the field trips. That, those are the field trips.
Right. That's why I suggested the forestry subcommittee be the, the kind of, the broader representation of what the collaborative is interested in. That, that would be great.
Well, we don't have a specific list for a forestry committee in the same fashion that we'd have a separate list, you know, for, say, the Recreation Committee, for example. So I would need to know if we were to go, if we wanted to have, you know, as a facilitator, do, am I, you know, like when the field tours come up, I've usually just sent that out to the entirety of the, of the group. You know, not a separate subcommittee in any fashion, in the same, in the same way that we do with the Recreation Committee. So if we, if you're wanting to do a forestry committee, I would just need to know who all is interested in being part of that. And then am I directed for field tourists to only contact that group?
So I think you should leave it open to everybody in, for a while, and then we'll see who regularly participates. And that'll, that'll dictate who the group becomes at some point, so you can sort of formalize a list.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
So just thinking this through a little bit, do we believe there's a, a need for a point of, you know, point of contact as it relates to this forestry subcommittee that the Forest Service would interact with? Or does the Forest Service continue to go through the facilitation team to call a, a field trip? You know, that's, that's not already planned or to have some kind of brief interaction, just getting feedback, so.
I would suggest through the facilitation team.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think the easiest.
In that case, do you need to increase the funding for the collaborative facilitation? If you're gonna be meeting more than what the, essentially the contract right now kind of anticipated?
Uh, we would probably need to revisit that when we're, you know, typically that's kind of the thing that we would revisit when we're getting ready to request the next round of, of funding and we do a, a new financial plan. But as long as, you know, the people that, you know, are, you know, that are participating, you know, like Tara or Kristen, you know, are aware of that need, then when we come back with a, you know, like an, you know, a, a larger request, say, then, then they aren't surprised by that change. But I think that, you know, that would some, be something that we will take into, into account when we're getting closer to that point, which I think is a few, it might be a little bit later this year.
I mean, collaboration is one of the things that was in the wildfire strategy, right? So it would make more sense that you would be able to find more, more collaboration.
Very good. Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to monitor that, Carol, and, and respond accordingly. Anybody else? There's quite a few that we've not yet heard from. Anybody else want to weigh in on this question as far as restructuring needs? Yeah, so.
I guess the one thing I would bring up real quick, and I just will confirm this with Tara, that if there's like an increased level of need and there's a nimbleness, as, as we've discussed up to this point, you know, I think it really comes down to, you know, Tara's schedule or, and/or Kristen's, you know, schedule.
Or Sarah, yeah.
You know, or Sarah. And so like as those, as those things come up, it would just be, I think, a matter of Tara basically saying, hey, look, we've got some good weather. We need, we can get out to such and such project. I have this particular day and then, and then pitching that to me so that I can throw it out to the, to the, the group at large and, and start to schedule that. Does that work for you, Tara?
Yeah, that would, that would be great. And I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate, you know, the ability for you guys to, you know, to be nimble and to, to kind of meet us out in the woods. And, you know, we talked about it briefly, the difference between the formal, you know, stamp of approval versus the, the kind of proactive. And we, we definitely have taken a, a turn into this, you know, getting the collaboration on the front end to, to look at what the project should be, instead of bringing you a well-developed or a, you know, an almost complete thought of what we think the project should be. So having, having the collaborative group's input on the, on the front end, like we've been doing, is incredibly valued to me, valuable to me. So I really appreciate the ability to be nimble and to, to go out to the woods and look at things as we're, as we're in the initial phases of, of, you know, what should we be doing out there and, and which are the priorities? So Kelly, that would be great for me, and I just really appreciate the collaborative group's willingness to, to be more available and to get out in the field more. Thank you so much for that.
Yeah, the only thing that I would request, you know, if possible, would be, you know, like at least a week's notice, just so that it can get into everybody's calendar and all that kind of stuff and, and any adjustments, you know, to people's schedules could be, you know, accomplished within a, and, and within that amount of time. If, if there's a greater need and it needs to be a couple of days or three days out or whatever, and it just happened to work out that way, then we can always put it out and, you know, see what kind of response we get, try to make sure that we're getting RSVPs so that we know that there's gonna be people from the, you know, like collaborative members that are available for those meetings. But I think that would be, you know, optimal for me is, is, is kind of like, you know, at, at least a week's notice, if, if, if that's doable.
Kelly, that's totally doable. I mean, that's the difference between giving you a week's notice or, or every other month and trying to, trying to get it all in. So that, that would be fantastic. I can, I can do a week, no problem.
Great. And Jerry, you had your hand up?
I, I did. I just wanted to say that what you described seems to, would work perfectly as far as hearing from Tara and then reaching out, and also just suggest to Tara that maybe as she's developing a schedule, maybe just give a couple of days' options of availability so we, people have a choice and, you know, and maybe more likely meet that need.
Great. Sounds good, Jerry. Thank you. And Randy?
Um, so thank you for this good discussion to make the collaborative more responsive to what's happening. I think there might be a little concern that I'm having that even a week's notice can be difficult to fit into some folks' schedule. And so I wonder if there's a hybrid here where, of course, ad hoc meetings, you know, field trips are all, you know, possible and can't, you can work around them, but maybe also holding that first Friday as a time that people could put in their calendars, you know, try to hit that. And if that doesn't work, then we have this backup plan for these ad hoc field trips or meetings. So there's almost like a tiered approach, just to help people's schedules. I wonder if that's a little bit about what's going on with the lighter attendance today. I'm sure some of it's the snow, but that's what occurs to me is, is there might be something we can do collectively to help make sure that we have good attendance for these new meeting times.
Yeah, thank you, Randy. You know, good, good point. And yeah, I, I guess what I'm hearing and, and maybe get some feedback on this, but I, I guess what I'm hearing is that, yeah, we would kind of maintain the current structure, right? I think Larry said, yeah, that's working. So we would continue to, you know, have these type of meetings one month and then a, a scheduled, you know, field tour the, the month following on, on the same Fridays, you know, that we've got currently set up. But we're gonna add, you know, to that structure, we're gonna add kind of this more ad hoc approach, utilizing this forestry subcommittee as the vehicle to facilitate this nimbleness and responsiveness. and responsiveness that uh the Forest Service and many members are expressing a need for. So that that's kind of what I'm hearing, that we're gonna maintain the current structure and we're just gonna add uh this ad hoc approach to to address uh things that might require more more responsiveness and more nimbleness um to meet the ongoing need.
I I understand that it would be in addition. My my suggestion was to add the first Friday as a potential um scheduling time for additional field trips. And if that doesn't work for whatever reason, you know, just so we would have uh some mechanism to help s- schedule a additional collaborative meetings. And so so that was my thought. Maybe there's a hybrid here um between where we're at and where we're going. Um completely ad hoc. So so that was my suggestion. And it was a suggestion that somebody made earlier that we add the first Friday um as a potential.
For every month is what you're saying, so. Or just a.
I would say, yeah, I mean, if we if we blocked out those dates um on a monthly basis, but only, you know, you know, if what if there wasn't a need, then we can basically make that statement, like there will not be a first Friday field tour this month or something to that effect. Um you know, and then as needed, there would be the, you know, the option to basically uh increase that. Like if if that particular day didn't work, you know, we can pitch, you know, and you know, another another day of the week on a on a separate part of the month or whatever. As as the agency folks uh need, you know, need that specific feedback. Larry?
Yeah, I just I wanna be clear here. I think it's important that we bend to Tara and Kristen's schedule. Rather than trying to force them into s- some arbitrary schedule that we set up way in advance. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and possibly, you know, with Tara having outlined, you know, Heimpong, you know, Big Ranch, Highway Three Corridor. If there's a way that, you know, you know, with the timing, you know, if those, if if there are you know, tours like that, that, you know, that we wanna set up specifically either within the current structure or within an, you know, additional um you know, tour dates, um then we, you know, like if we can put together some rudimentary uh schedule for the next, say, six months, um as it's the most imperative piece of, you know, this. Then um that probably would help a little bit too. And I I can just work with Tara more directly on whether, you know, whether there's a, you know, whether that fits their schedule.
Okay, time check. Uh we're running around ten forty, about five minutes left on this particular agenda item. Any other ideas or suggestions, proposals regarding this? So we've got some chat comments here.
Uh ju- just go forth and do it. Let's just try it out and let's make it work.
Okay.
Lejean, every hand up?
Yeah, so this is kinda just, I'm just throwing this out there. But as we go into this process of kind of re uh configuring how this collaborative is gonna work in this manner, I would just suggest we think about what success looks like. So that as we go down the road, we could say, do did we hit the mark? Or are we wide right and we need to adjust? Uh and and then we could kind of figure out how to actually meet what we're what we're talking about uh when we talk about success. Because we wanna be, we wanna be more nimble, okay? So we start doing that. Uh does that get uh our the Forest Service what they want? Right, so just keep in mind, trying to define what success looks like, so we can uh, you know, see if we're meeting that expectation down the road.
Thank you, uh Lejean. Yeah, that sounds like maybe a future agenda item. What is success?
Yeah. I mean, generally speaking, I, the feeling that I get for most of the field tours is, you know, whenever we get together, it's a success. But um but, you know, I I that's a point well taken.
Re- reaching agreement on some controversial issue is always a success too, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up. Last call here. We do, I do have one other kind of subitem under this uh with the five minutes we've got remaining here, so not seeing any further uh hands. Uh I think we've come to agreement in terms of how we wanna proceed. So yeah, Kelly and I will uh will finalize that, maybe get it back out to you. Uh maybe via Jerry's recommendation, maybe via email post this meeting. It's a good suggestion. And uh hopefully we capture what the group at large is uh uh input today was. And thank you very much. Uh uh Kelly and I appreciate it very much. I think we've got a much better understanding of uh how to move forward and how to put that uh proposal together. So thank you very much. So again, with the five minutes here we've got left, um Kelly and I again would like some feedback when it comes to what type of meeting structure as it relates to, uh you know, you know, the nuts and bolts of it, uh the group at large uh would like to move forward with. As you see today, we're kind of on a full Zoom mode. Um we we have been kind of operating with uh this hybrid uh concept as well. Where, you know, we kind of have some in the room with us, some out there on Zoom. And I think I've even heard some suggest that maybe another alternative would be just to do face-to-face uh in-person meeting. So again, just with the few minutes we have remaining, anybody have any strong uh opinions one way or the other? Do we wanna just kind of play it by ear? Uh that's kind of how this uh came about. As you recall, we had some technological challenges uh with our meeting in January that I know a number of you were very frustrated with and rightly so. Um so again, we just wanted to open that up. Uh maybe one proposal is you let Kelly and I kind of make that call on a meeting-to-meeting basis. Depending on the weather and other challenges that we perceive might be uh uh coming about. So any anything, uh I see one comment there, uh Lejean, hybrid works very well for folks living farther out and for weather situations. So there's a hybrid vote. Any, anybody else have any strong uh opinions one way or the other? Any answers? Larry, yep. Go ahead, Larry.
I think I think for these kinds of formal meetings, since we're doing the field trips and then we're gonna be doing extra field trips. We're gonna be doing plenty of face-to-face for these decision-making meetings. I think these full uh Zoom meetings are are the way to go for now anyway.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Uh I see a thumbs up from Jennifer there, from Carol. Okay, Zoom going once, Zoom going twice. Zoom is.
On the subject of Zoom, could I say something?
There you go, Arnold.
I think um if you guys can um get comfortable with the technology, uh that would help. And it would go a long way, I think, to make a successful Zoom meeting if the people who are present. If we ever get a hybrid or we ever have park hybrid, which seems inevitable, that people identify themselves. Because the Zoom people can't tell who's talking. And and it would really, that would, that small measure would would help um make Zoom meetings successful or partial Zoom meetings successful.
Yeah, that can just be a parliamentary kind of, you know, we'll make that clear when we're doing housekeeping that, you know, like anybody in the room that's gonna speak. You know, basically say their name first and then make their comments. And I think that's a a valid uh a valid concern and and way to handle that.
All right, thank you, Arnold. All right, we are officially at the end of this uh first agenda item. Anybody else have any comments on hybrid Zoom? Okay, I think we got the general gist gist that for these kind of more operational business-type meetings. Zoom it will be uh and yeah, where where uh opportunity presents uh to go more hybrid. Uh we'll explore that. I I think we are, we are looking at some other venues where I mean, we may have greater confidence in the technological capabilities that would facilitate more of a hybrid approach. Uh but until we have a chance to flush those out, I think we'll just, we'll just go with the Zoom for these uh more operational techniques. Right, thank you very much uh for all your input. Uh next up, report out from the February seventeenth field tour. Uh I don't know that we had anybody in particular in mind, so if somebody wanted to kind of start that discussion off, just mainly, I guess, for the benefit of those of us that were unable to attend that tour. Uh if someone would be willing to kind of start us off and just uh discuss uh the highlights of that and potentially any uh successes, agreements that were reached. Any volunteers? Well, I know Kelly was pretty jazzed about that, so maybe Kelly can start us off.
All right, um yeah, I'm hoping, I know that a number of people that are on the call were on that meeting. So it'd be nice to have impressions, but I'll give a, I'll I'll couch it in a um and just sort of like the structure of the day. Uh we met here at the RCD. Um it was cold morning uh and we chose to uh switch the agenda around a little bit. So we ended up going up to Brown Space One. Um which was the um up on Muster Hill, uh just because we thought there might be, it might, you know, with the frozen roads and stuff. It would be a little bit better for access. So we wait, we went up, had a look at um those units uh and began, you know, to discuss sort of, you know, how that uh implementation was done originally. That was a harvest that happened about ten, eleven years ago. Um it it sort of brought, you know, the Browns the Browns' recorded decision for that NEPA basically specified that uh no, no trees above twenty-four inches in diameter and uh and uh were were to be harvested and that the canopy closure target was seventy percent. Um Brown Space One was uh one, it was obviously the first of a of those particular timber operations. And uh it was noted that that particular sale actually brought the canopy closure down to about fifty-three percent, uh which was lower than we had expected. But the fa- but the uh discussion revolved around the fact that the Forest Service had followed up about five years later with some um uh uh clearing of under, you know, under, you know, like regeneration and and undergrowth. Um through, uh I think below both mechanical means as well as uh prescribed fire, if I'm not mistaken. And uh those units, you know, that particular unit, you know, has a has a had a very good um, you know, desired outcome as far as a field break within the community forest. And any comments about that? Tara or um maybe Larry or Jerry?
I'll go, Kelly. Um yeah, I thought the the field trip was um was really valuable. I thought it was really good to, you know, we we uh had a project that had been implemented. It had some time under its belt. It had a follow-up treatment. Um and I and I thought that was a good, a good place to start to see, you know, what exactly are the end results. Um and and it wasn't necessarily what was anticipated in the front end. And I know we had concerns with the brush coming in. And so it seemed like the consensus of the group was that that the treatment um at our first stop was um that the forest looked healthy, that um felt like it was uh more resilient to wildfire. Um and so I I felt like that that first part on Browns, the first stop was really good. And then uh we went to the second stop and looked at, you know, um sort of the uh the effectiveness and longevity of the treatment that we had implemented at the at the second stop where it was still um it was better than it had been, but it maybe uh if we had uh been a little more, taken a few more of the trees off, it probably would have um been more effective over a longer period of time. Uh so there were some really good discussions there. I really enjoyed, uh you know, we're out in the woods. Let's be real, I'm always happy when we're out in the woods. So I always enjoy it. Uh but I thought the discussion was really good and um yeah, the collaborative had a good a a good variety of folks that were there uh that weighed in and that that really helped me a lot, so. Um and then I'll let, uh well, I I don't know who you want to talk about the BLM stops. Um or if you just wanna finish up with the brown stuff first.
Yeah, uh it looks like Larry's got his hand up.
Yeah, I want to uh to say that we we uh the first two-thirds of the field trip. We looked at things we'd done in the past that were right, things that could be improved. I think when we got to the last third of the field trip, the BLM part of the trip. Um that was a little more problematic. We we visited a site that was unrepresentative of of the full project, unfortunately. It was really an oak woodland uh site with conifers encroaching. And so we didn't really get to talk about you know, the prescription that that BLM was using further up the road where the big trees were. So that was unfortunate that we didn't get up to where the big trees were. We had quite a lively debate with the BLM, a person, I believe her name was Heidi, I think. Yeah, we had, you know, it was a lively debate. I don't think we ever got to consensus uh about what was going on there. Um but we had a good debate and I think we we made some good points. Hopefully she was listening. Um but that was my take on it.
Yeah, um I guess I would just add that, you know, from Browns, the this, when we went to Brown Space Three, which is the more recent, you know, the 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 operations that had happened last um summer. Um we got to see, you know, a fresher cut on that, on that um that particular unit and it basically um in, you know, in, you know, the, I I think by and large, it was it was understood that, you know, Warner, the licensed timberite, tim- a timber operator, basically had done exactly what we had asked him to, you know, ask them to do. And, you know, the and 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 so that debate kind of revolved around whether or not the you know, that that those restrictive kind of measures, the, you know, the the restriction to twenty-four inch diameter, the the restriction to a seventy percent canopy closure was was something that we wanted, you know, was was that the desired outcome that we wanted for that particular unit? And Tom Walts, you know, spoke pretty strongly about the fact that he didn't think that it was. And he felt like there would be, you know, if there was fire coming towards this unit, it would, it would likely carry a crown fire through that stand. So it wasn't as resilient as we, as he would have liked to have seen it. And I think there was some consensus, you know, in that, in that discussion that, you know, there could have probably been, you know, more done there. So, you know, by the time that we got up to BLM, and I I wanna thank the BLM for um, you know, actually coming out and being part of that. I think having multiple agencies there to like basically have that, you know, broader discussion as to um, you know, what the, you know, how the prescriptions work or don't work, what's good about the, you know, this prescription or that prescription? What doesn't work about that, this prescription or that prescription? I think, I think that is super informative, you know, um because, you know, while this was focused largely on the community forest and obviously we managed the community forest for a different um, you know, a different uh outcome, say, than we might, you know, for the, say, the pilot project or or other projects that are more um, you know, like separate, separated from from communities. Uh I think, you know, having both of those agencies there with all their specialists, you know, talking. You know, I thought that was a super productive uh, you know, way to to relay information both from the group. You know, because there are members of the steering committee there as well as the collaborative, you know, because it was a collaborative field tour. It, I think that was a just, it was a very productive, you know, meeting. I thought um that we came away from a lot of that with a lot of good direction. When it came down to the units that we were looking at that were on the BLM side. Um, you know, and they had a a more adaptive management style of, you know, I would think what she was, you know, was she was You know, and they had a more adaptive management style of, you know, I would think what she was, you know, was she was advocating for, and that particular you, you know, unit, you know, would, would have been a little bit, you know, the, the, the prescriptions that were used on Brown's Phase One, Two, and Three would have been a little bit too prohibitive. For the units that we were in on Oregon Mountain. And for the, for the record, you know, there, there isn't an easy way to drive up into the main part of the unit. We were below a significant portion of it along the ridge top. You know, which, where there will be a fair bit of treatment, but the, the, the larger part of the unit is not really accessible. You know, as is because the old roads that are in there need to be reopened and, and we would have had to hike up a couple of miles to, or well, I'd say about a mile to get to to the, to the main part of those units, which we had done on a previous, we were, we were Community Forest Steering Committee meeting. So, so we opted not to actually get up into that unit, which is why we, that went down that way. But I see Jerry's got his hand up.
Thank you. Just another other comment on the third stop. I think that was the first time the collaborative had met with BLM people on a proposed project. So it was kind of a learning experience for Heidi, I think, and wanted to give props to Tara for asking all the hard questions, which I think rattled Heidi, but then Tara said, well, those are the questions I always get. So I just wanted to share those. So it was a good experience on both sides, especially the third stop.
I think, you know, from that perspective, I think that was one of the things that was brought, you know, home to Heidi specifically was that, you know, this collaborative group has, and with Tara, you know, with Tara's willingness, there is a great deal of, of, of front end, you know, field tours where, where she's getting a lot of that really good feedback upfront before it's like, say, a defined, you know, like before that, you know, preferred alternative has sort of been settled on for the NEPA. And I think hearing that and hearing how that works, I think was somewhat eye opening for, for Heidi, because I think that, that wasn't necessarily as made clear to her prior to a meeting like this. But I think a lot of that would help, you know, like with the multi-agency, you know, even if it is a US Forest Service project that we're going to go look at, it'd be informative to the BLM to, to be, you know, a part of those discussions in advance of proposing a project like that. So I think that that was part of the, part of the takeaway, I think, was that that need of those groups to basically have that input prior to there being decisions made. So, yeah, Larry.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what, what Tom and others of us were talking about wasn't that we wanted more done on those units. We wanted it done differently. Like we would have picked different trees to take and different trees to leave. I think that's an important differentiation to make there.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. I see Jennifer's got a comment there in the chat room, but this is the first green treatment we have had since Heidi has been here, since everything else has been salvaged. So probably a good point there. Jennifer, I don't know if you wanted to embellish that comment any at this time?
This is Jerry. Heidi made that pretty clear on stop two. That was her first one since coming in.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Time check. We've got a minute left on this agenda item. Anybody else want to contribute? I see Tara's got her hand up. Tara?
But, but before Jen calls me, because I asked BLM all the tough questions, to be, to be clear, Jen, I just, I kind of with, with your folks said, hey, the, these are the issues that, that the collaborative group typically has concerns about. You know, they, they want to know what your follow-up going to treat, treatment going to be? How are you going to keep from getting, you know, a lot of brush in here? Are you, are you planning on using herbicides, those kinds of things? So, which, you know, we, we tend to talk about it all of our, on all of our field trips on the front end. So I figured, I, you know, I just tried to give them an idea of those are the things that I kind of know are the concerns of the collaborators as we go into these front end meetings and and that's just kind of something I was just trying to share with, with the BLM staff there, Jen, kind of how we've evolved in our field trips from going through. This is the project that we want to do. This is where we want to do it. Can we get your stamp of approval to, and, and we were unsuccessful with that. We, we were poster child for being unsuccessful with that. And that's why Pilot took so long. So we've evolved to, hey, here's an area we need to go do some work in. We think it's a priority. What do you, what do you, what does a collaborative think about this area and the potential treatments? So that, that's kind of what I was sharing with them.
All right. Thank you, Tara.
Good cleanup, Tara. It was good.
I, I, I would just follow up real quickly that I did have a discussion with Heidi Rogers, you know, after that meeting to just get a, like a check in with her about how she felt that it went. And, you know, her general feeling was that that it was very informative and it was very helpful to get that. And she was, she was glad to have had that opportunity. So and I think it was, you know, productive and, and, you know, sort of the, you know, the requested sort of, you know, the requested addressing of the concerns with regard to that specific NEPA. I, I think, I think it was helpful and, and Alden had some really good comment. Alden Neo also has some very good comments on the BLM end of things with regard to that. So and I, I, I thought it was, you know, I came away from that meeting being, feeling pretty optimistic, you know, on, on both sides of that. So I think it was good. I want to just also note that Josh Cosine is here from the Trinity Journal and I see that Joseph Rodarm has, has come on. So very timely with regard to our next item.
All right. We are at the end of that field tour discussion. So thank you all for your contributions. Sounds like that was a very productive field tour. And yeah, hopefully that will allow us to to continue that field tour emphasis going forward. So next up, we have the description discussion of determination of NEPA adequacy authority. And I think Tara was going to take that one on. And I believe she's got somebody that's going to facilitate that discussion for us. Tara, are you with us?
Yep. I just like to, I keep clicking the button too many times. So Joe Rodarm is going to join us. He is our environmental coordinator here on the Shasta Trinity National Forest. And so he really is kind of oversees a lot of our NEPA and keeps us moving in the right direction. And I will, for any other questions you may have about the DNA, I, I will defer to Joe and to Sarah. Sarah is more experienced with working with this particular tool than I am. And for, for obvious reasons that, that she'll probably touch on. I do have to step out for a minute, but I, but I will be right back and I'm leaving you in incredibly capable hands, much more so than if you're with me. So these people will, will take the lead. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for that, Tara. So I have a presentation here to review determinations of NEPA adequacy with you all. Yeah. And by the way, Sarah said, my name is Joe Rodarm. I'm the environmental coordinator here on the Shasta Trinity. So let me just get this.
You are able to share, if you go to the button at the bottom, the big green share screen, you, you are able to pull up whatever you need if you'd like.
Okay, perfect. So you should be able to see my screen now.
It's coming up. There it is.
Perfect. Okay. So this is, um, a, a presentation we use internally on, on, on our forest when we discuss determination of NEPA adequacy. Okay, there we go. So to begin with, you know, what is a DNA, right? So it's a new type of NEPA analysis that requires a decision such as a categorical exclusion, environmental assessment, or an environmental impact statement. It's new to the Forest Service and I'll get into a little bit more in the background here in a minute. The primary purpose of the DNA is to document the determination that the effects of a new proposed action on the ground is adequately analyzed in an already existing NEPA document. And that it complies with all applicable laws, regulations and policies that, that may be triggered. It's important to note that adequately analyzed has not yet been clearly defined by our regulations. And so that leaves some discretion up to the responsible official to decide if that existing analysis is, is adequately similar or not. So really quick background information on why we can use this new NEPA tool. The 2020 amendments to the Forest Service's NEPA regulations included this provision. Like I mentioned a minute ago, this is a new type of NEPA document for the Forest Service, but other agencies such as the B, the BLM have been using DNAs for, for many years now. A DNA can also minimize analyses needed for a new NEPA project. So basically we're saying we've, we already have this analysis established in another document. So now we no longer would need to conduct a new analysis. And the amount of work to complete a DNA should be, should be less than what's required for most CE's. Again, it's going to depend on the scope and scale. So we also have some provisions, some regulations on when we can actually use the DNA, right? So again, going back to the existing environmental analysis that is adequately analyzed for that new proposed action. And it's up to the responsible official to determine that the existing NEPA analysis does adequately assess the effects of the new proposed action. We also have some rules on how we, how we determine when we can use the DNA. Each of the following elements must be met. So the first one is the new proposed action is substantially the same as a previously analyzed proposed action. So it's not just that the effects have to be substantially similar and adequately analyzed. It's also the new proposed action. The range of alternatives analyzed in the existing NEPA document is appropriate with respect to the new proposed action. So again, we would have had to analyze a, an appropriate range of alternatives in that document that we are based, basing the DNA off of. The third one that must be met is that any new information or circumstances relevant to environmental concerns would not substantially change the analysis in an existing NEPA document. So basically, yeah, there, there can't be new, like new change conditions on the ground, right? Or, or new policies that have been enacted. And again, I already mentioned this, but it, it's the other, it's the fourth requirement. The environmental effects would, that would result from the new action are substantially, or, or similar to those analyzed in the existing NEPA document that we are using. So just to review the process requirements really quickly, because, so, you know, a CE and an EA in, under Forest Service regulations, they require scoping. And so does a DNA. We would also include this new project under the DNA on our SOPA, which is our schedule of proposed actions. And just to make sure that we are being transparent with the public, providing that information. The proposed action under the DNA is going to be the same as the document we are tearing it to. So basically that administrative review process for a CE doesn't, does not exist. But there is an administrative review process for an environmental assessment. And the Forest Service differs from the BLM in those ways. They don't have that administrative review process. And what it really does is, is it allows stakeholders and interested parties to object on our, on a project before it gets into the court system. So if we're basing this DNA off of a CE, then there would not be an administrative review. If we're doing it based off an EA, then there would be that administrative review. And then there's a requirement for a new decision document for the DNA. So our DNA template does include a decision notice or a decision memo. It just depends on the type of analysis. Again, if we're basing it off of the CE or an EA. We also needed to demonstrate compliance with other laws. So a DNA functions, a DNA functions to demonstrate compliance with NEPA's requirements and not those of other laws itself, but we still have to demonstrate compliance of, with those other laws, such as the Endangered Species Act in the project record. New consultation might be required when using the DNA, if the proposed action triggers that consultation for either the Endangered Species Act or the National Historic Preservation Act. So that was a very quick overview of the DNA process and this new tool that we have. Our Sarah, do you have any additional comments? Anything you would like to mention about the DNA?
I just think it's a really awesome tool. We were able to use it very effectively when I was at the BLM Reading Field Office to to use more programmatic documents and then apply them in a site-specific way and, and really speed up the process. I think the Forest Service, this is still new to, to this agency. And so we're going to have some trial and error and figuring it out period. But I think once we get our feet underneath us and people are more familiar, it's really going to help us out. So thank you, Joe. That was great.
No problem. And, and you're right. It is brand new to the Forest Service. I was going to touch on that and I, I missed it. So thank you. And I mean, but that is so new. We actually have not completed one yet from my understanding across the entire Forest Service. It's, it's just a new process and they're still trying to work out all those, you know, all the little characteristics of it.
Thank you, Joe and Sarah. It's been suggested by Sarah that Jen Mata has a lot of experience in this realm too. I don't know if Jennifer's with us, but if Jennifer wanted to chime in here, this would be the appropriate time. I see Jennifer.
I'm here.
All right, great.
I guess just a couple of things to add. We've talked, I think several times before on prior collaborative meetings about BLM's use of DNAs. And we have one current statewide BLM programmatic document for hazard fuels reduction that we use quite a bit out of the Reading Office that allows us to expedite work on property boundaries, power line rights of ways, roadside, things like that. And then we've talked also about, there's another statewide programmatic document in the works being drafted by our California State Office for Fuels Management, which will give us the ability to DNA as well to that document, but is a broader area of treatments focused mostly on treatments in the urban interface. So we do use them quite a bit and it's been helpful for being able to meet some of our increased fuels management goals.
Excellent. Thank you.
Carol, you have a question?
Yeah. Well, I was wondering, well, first of all, if, if Joe or Sarah had some examples of maybe current environmental documents that they would be using, you know, this DNA for, and then specifically I had a question about the hazard trees north of the Trinity Center Airport because Forest Service had done some work there to reduce those trees in the past. Is this something where you could now go in and, and address the current problem?
So Carol, it's gonna, we have the airport trees in the Trinity Camps proposal right now. And that is, is far enough along the path that it's just going to be faster for us to keep it in Trinity Camps and, and make a decision on that. So hopefully that helps. We should have a scoping letter out for that very soon. As far as opportunities to DNA, we'd really be looking at sort of semi-recent existing environmental analyses on the West Side. And I think Joe, Joe and Tara might be more familiar with those, like those best documents that we'd want to use as a stepping stone to move forward.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah. So we do have some examples. And we've had this conversation internally and we're trying to look for good projects we can use DNAs for. And one that has come up a couple of times is Pilot on the West Side that we may look at some additional, you know, plantation thinning along road sides and, and, and tier back to Pilot with the DNA. So.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Rod, do you have your hand up?
Yeah. Do we, is this something that we can use on the Lake Trail Program, you know? We could use it over and over again? Or is this? Or is this is it still gonna be held up for personal reasons?
You'd have we so we'd have to have something existing to base it off of.
There's an existing NEPA isn't there on the first mile of trail?
Not yet. We gotta get there. Once we have that existing NEPA, then yes, we could. We could look at DNAing off of that for future segments. Depending on the site specific circumstances, it it may or may not work as well. But but once we get through the first segment, we can absolutely look at that.
Well, we're talking about my lifetime. I'm getting closer and closer, you know?
I know. I'm working on it.
Yeah, 10 years. It's been 10 years already.
You have to hang around until we get the trail done, Ross.
It's hard. It's been hard. It's hard.
All right. Any other comments, questions that pertains to Joe's presentation, Joe and Sarah's presentation? I'm not seeing any hands.
Arnold, take it. So Joe, Joe. In order to apply the pilot project NEPA to to extend the pilot project NEPA, it seems like the biggest obstacle that comes to my mind is there's owls everywhere. And it seems like almost anything we do would is likely to require some additional consultation about about owl. So how likely is it that we'll be able to use existing NEPA for to extend out?
Yeah. So we definitely could use the existing NEPA, right? As long as those requirements are met that, you know, the the proposed action is substantially similar that the environmental effects have been adequately analyzed and that the conditions on the ground are pretty much the same as what we described in that original document. But all those consultation requirements, if if so, if consultation was triggered under that original project like Pilot, then it's more it's more likely it's going to be triggered again. But that's since that's a completely separate process outside of NEPA. It's dependent on on those requirements that that trigger it, but it would still it would it would be required if it's triggered is what I'm trying to say.
Which could be avoided presumably in theory if we avoid owls. Is that right?
Correct. If if there aren't any and and we can adequately reasonably show that in the project area, then yeah, the consultation most likely would not be triggered.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Arnold. Anybody else? Not seeing any. So thank you again very much, Joe and Sarah and Jennifer. Yep, I was looking for that one. Very much. Yeah. Hopefully that educates us all, gets us all better familiar with that tool and its application here. And hopefully that leads to some streamlining of the NEPA process for future projects. Okay. We are gonna close the books on that one and move on to BLM updates. Is Jennifer? There she is. All right, Jennifer.
Um, I don't actually have a whole heck of a lot. I always feel like when I talk to you guys, it's like a broken record. We are mostly focused on our resource management plan revision. So stay tuned for more. We're still working through alternatives, but do have hope to have a draft document for people to review out to the public here in the next little while. So that's what my staff has been focused on. As far as projects in Trinity County right now, I think you all saw the email, but the public comment period for the Oregon Mountain project that you guys were on on the field tour should be out for public review on the 20th. So on Monday. So if people are interested in looking at that NEPA document, it is on our e-planning website. And I think that's it for us.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for Jennifer? Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you very much. I did leapfrog, skipped over the Forest Service update. So I assume Tara would be providing that update for the Shasta Trinity. Is Tara with us? I know she said she had to step away. Maybe Sarah's able to give us an update. I know. Sarah, you prepared to give us an update for the Shasta Trinity?
Uh, we do typically break out by management unit. So I can speak to to my management unit and maybe a bit from Tara's. But I swim in her lane too much, if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
So just wanted to speak briefly about the priority landscapes as they intersect with the national recreation area. So for out year planning, well, for this year, our focus priority landscapes wise is completing planning for Trinity Camps. Which we've talked to the collaborative about on numerous occasions and we did a field trip. Then for out year, the national recreation area plans to take the lead on Highway Three North. We're really excited to see the mapping product that comes out of the Fire Safe Council to to look at what treatments are planned on federal land, private land, and and kind of start looking at doing some of those fill in the gaps for Forest Service that is not covered in partnership with the collaborative and the Fire Safe Council. But we're at the very beginning. You know, pre-planning stages of that. So just want to get that on everyone's radar. I have a Minersville update, but I see that that has a whole space on the agenda for it. So I can wait then or I can do it now.
But why don't you go ahead and do that? Sarah, that'd be great.
Okay, so Minersville. Thank you very much to for all the support getting some more funding released from the California Department of Boating and Waterways. That happened on February 27th, I believe. They released the additional funds and got that over to the Forest Service. And then we have been working to process those funds and get them in our accounts and do all the behind the scenes financial things that people do to receive money officially. So this month we will be putting out, we'll be moving forward with getting the package back to contracting, starting the process again to put out a request for proposals for an engineering and design firm to get us a design and an official cost estimate for Minersville, which is the critical next step. So it's moving again.
So so time wise, so this month, does that mean like in the next, you know, 10 days or so, you're gonna be sending it back to contracts? And then how long is it gonna take contracts to send out the bid package for the engineering?
I don't have a window into their process. They're they're getting slammed from a lot of fronts. I'm hoping because we were having this conversation with contracting back in October about the level of importance and priority this is, that this can be other things considered completely done and just needs to be reissued to a new group. But I don't have control over their processes.
Yeah, because I mean, the concern is, I think that right now contracts is still behind even on, I think, some of the rack stuff that we submitted and then they're getting the whole you know, wildfire strategy stuff. And so how do we make sure that Minersville doesn't get, you know, lower down in the priority list again?
I will be in good communication with y'all if that looks like that's what's happening.
Yeah, please let us know because I mean, September is when we met with Rachel and she said it was a priority then. And now we're, you know, the end of March. So people are pretty darn frustrated. I know I keep saying that, but you know, they still are. Anyway, thank you very much. That would be awesome if we could get that out to bid for an engineering firm.
All right, Sarah. I do want to interrupt here. It looks like we do have a new participant who has joined us. Believe that might be him. Is that? Is that Tim Saxon? Is that Tim Saxon there?
Are you asking about the person on the phone?
Yeah. 432.
Hi, this is Randy Perez. I got dropped from the Zoom meeting. So.
Sorry, I thought I recognized the number, but I wasn't sure because we were expecting Tim Saxon to do it at some point today. Okay. All right, Sarah, was that was that all you you reported you?
Uh, those are the big things for me. And I think Earl wanted to go next since she has.
I have a question for Sarah.
Okay.
Sure. Yep. Hey, Sarah. I know you didn't mention it, but could you just speak to the rumors and scuttlebutt about the lake being drained and not filling while all the other California lakes are filling up? Do you know anything? Have any insight into that?
I have zero insight. I have not heard that particular rumor.
Uh, okay. Yeah, if you talk to if you talk to Mike Dixon or Paul Hooser, they'll tell you, you know, they are not releasing any additional water in order to accommodate the structure maintenance. But what they're doing is they're not going through the power pen stocks or going around the side. So it just looks like they're releasing more water, but they're not.
They're not. Okay, thank you.
There was a I was also sitting on a Trinity River Watershed Council meeting earlier this week. And one of the things that Mike Dixon did mention regarding that specifically had to do with the fact that there were some, you know, they part of their decision making process has to do with adjusting to seasonal flows. And because the increased levels of water that we're seeing everywhere and that's coming into the into the to the watershed, basically, they're there, they've increased some of the flows, they have increased some of the flows to to take into account that seasonal influx for the amount of rain and snow and precipitation that we have had. So I my understanding was that they did increase the flows a little bit. I was down by the river. It certainly looked like it was coming out at a at a greater rate than than the, you know, 300 or 400, 450 CFS that they normally flow at. But that was something that he did mention at that group.
Well, I too saw that. It just seems there's there's a lot of space in Trinity Lake. For water without ready release.
He he expected that, given the current flows and the flow regimes that they're using and the amounts of water that's coming into the reservoir, that it's they're they're expecting that the reservoir will probably be approaching 50% full by the end of this rainy season.
And that's okay?
Well, that's just what he said. I was just joking.
Okay, yeah.
That's not up to me.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Tara, you up?
Thank you very much. And Sarah, I'm sorry, I stepped out. Did you mention the the requisitions we're looking to hire? Um, when you went?
No, but that's a good thought to share that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I wanted to just give you all an update that the one of the things the forest is looking at doing right now is to add several rec positions across the forest. I think if you add across the forest, it was I think it's like five, six, 11, like 19 positions potentially. That's across the whole forest. And there's 166, I think, in the region. So don't lock me on the 19. That's just what I can remember. And it's been a long week. So but the difference with this particular hiring event is that the jobs will be advertised on USA jobs like before, but we will be having events. There'll be one in Mount Shasta, one in Reading, I believe. Sarah, and then one will have some folks available in Weaverville on a date to be announced next week, I'm thinking Friday. And people can come in and get some help with how to how to do their resume, how to get their stuff into USA jobs. Jobs will open on the 10th of, sorry, the 20th and close on the 30th. So they're gonna open March 20th, which is next week and they'll close March 30th. And we're hoping to pick up for the West Side, I can speak to, I think it's six positions, three at the GS five, six, seven position and three at the GS five position. So we're hoping to pick up six there. And Sarah, how many did you have?
Five.
Okay, I I thought we were 11. I couldn't remember the what the schmoo has for sure. So anyways, that's super exciting for us. And then also let you know the other movement we're having recently, and this was like today and yesterday, is our entry level hiring events and and group vacancy announcements will be will be moving forward where we're trying to onboard a lot more people at for technicians grades. What, three through technicians, nine and four professionals like five, seven, nines. So so that's the region is really and the Forest Service is really trying to find new ways to hire people and get them on board. And we're starting to see some of those numbers, which is the event that I'm juggling today is a new employee orientation. We have had 55 people that have been brought on across the forest in the last couple of years, some of that during COVID. And so we're we're getting them on boarded. That's a big part of what I'm doing this week. Um, acres wise, we we've been doing a lot of pile burning. We've got over 150 acres burned on the TRMU of pile burning and over 170 acres on the South Fork Management Unit. One big change you'll notice with the Forest Service and with the forest is we're much more nimble in helping each other out with burning. Sarah has sent a bunch of her folks over to help us burn both on the South Fork Unit as well as on the Trinity River Management Unit. And then when Sarah's unit was able to accomplish a big burn on her unit over a couple of day span, we sent our folks that way. So we're really really adjusting to those priorities. And when windows open, we're we're working across district boundary lines and really getting getting after some stuff. So those are probably, oh, and then I've I've been working and Lejean will probably talk a little bit about the agreements that he's working on, but I'm working with the county to get the master good neighbor of good neighbor authority agreement put in place. And then I've gotten that through regional review, gotten it through. It's back to the county now to get their final input. And Kelly McElroy will get that submitted for us and we will promptly begin working on potential spas. Some of the things that we're looking at is some roadside brushing, the use of the Bailey Bridge. It's currently stationed at Forest Glen. As well as some trying to get their tub grinder up and running and helping us address some of the fuels along those lines. We also included things like engineering services in the master. Gosh, we put as much in there as we could to to a snow removal to try and be able to partner with the county more effectively. Yeah, lots of lots of good work that's got to be done there. So those are probably and you know, we've been snowed out of the woods. So I do have a field trip I need to take to address the Corral Gulch project and work with the Watershed Center on that. And unfortunately, we were snowed out of the woods for that. And and I'm trying to work with I met with Larry Winter briefly on the High and Palm project and will be headed out there to meet with his whole Fire Safe Council. And then shortly thereafter, schedule our field trip out to the High and Palm area. So those are probably the things that I'm that I'm busiest working on and then still trying, you know, the priority landscape requires a lot of collaboration with the Six Rivers. With the forest, Kelly McElroy has really been working very, very hard to to help us manage both the Trinity County priority landscape as well as the Klamath Basin landscape. So those are the things that are pretty much keeping keeping me and my folks busy. And then, you know, it's been a little frustrating that we have all the manpower in the world to try to get a bunch of burning done. We even ordered in crews to help us get our burning done, which is a new thing we hadn't done in the past and until we got rain and snow that was helping. So that's kind of what the biggest push we're working. Oh, and we're working to put together a very large contract, an IRSC contract to deal with a lot of the the burn material that didn't sell out of the August complex as well as including some of the fuels, some of the green fuels reduction work a little bit in um, as well as including some of the, uh, fuels, some of the green fuels reduction work, a little bit in, uh, in, uh, West Side Plantation, some of those acres to do some of that thinning, um, that we've been kind of working away at. So any, any questions for me?
Carol, call.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I mean, I, with the storms, I've noticed a ton of trees that have fallen down across like Highway Three, you know, broken trees. I know Caltrans is going to go back at some point and address those, but I was just curious, does does the Forest Service have the ability to take some of those out that are kind of hanging out over the road, you know, on their properties and stuff? How does that work?
Yeah, typically, um, if we identify, um, if, if Caltrans identifies hazard trees ahead of time that we, we need to address and get out, we, we typically can work with them. And honestly, with the way that the, we've had so much insect da- uh, damage and, and trees that are kind of fading out along the highway, um, we absolutely have the ability to look at more than, you know, so just a tree by tree uh, approach, we could look at a, a bigger swath of ground and work with Caltrans, uh, through their easement and their, um, oper- their maintenance plan. We can look at getting some of that work done relatively, uh, easily.
Okay. One of our firefighters, um, had a tree fall down right in front of them like a, a China Gulch and hit his vehicle and stuff. So it's just something on our mind, which is how are they going to deal with all these broken and fall, you know, leaning over the highway and stuff. And so I'm just curious. So thank you very much.
That's a, it's a great question and that's definitely a, uh, remember that when we start to put together the Highway Three Plan for reasons, uh, to support the project.
All right.
All right. Any other questions for Tara?
We have a new participant, uh, with, that's calling in by phone. Uh, the number is seven, three, one, three. Who might that be?
It's Heidi Carpenter Harris.
Oh, welcome, Heidi.
Heidi, all right.
Hi.
Welcome.
Okay. Anything else, Tara?
That's all I had for you.
All right. I don't see any other follow-up questions, so we will move on to Lejean. I assume you're representing security's Lejean?
Yes, sir. Uh, Kristen couldn't be with us today, so I'll step into her shoes and give you some information about what we got going on here.
All right.
For stuff, uh, I'd just like to, uh, thank Pat Frost, who may, I don't think he's on the call today, but Pat Frost and Jerry Cousin, they both attended a, a presentation that we had for a Dan Dill Collaborative, uh, Conservation Award. Uh, Ranger Dill's family attended and, uh, received that award. It was the first of its kind. So thank you for the two of you, uh, being present, uh, for that ceremony. Storm damage, so we're dealing with that as well. Uh, we had some recent activity this week where we there's funding being made available and folks are getting out to do some aerial surveys of the roads so that we can ascertain ahead of the season uh, what kind of damage we have so we can start planning those engineering projects. Uh, as you're all aware, with all this water, we're going to have a lot of slides. And then in fire footprints, we're having a lot of hazard trees come down. So we're trying to get a, uh, an idea of what we're dealing with so we can plan for getting that removal. Projects. I, I second what was said there. I summarizes my life. Um, so other, and then related to storm damage, we have the, a lot of snow uh, that is blocking our way into our project areas for the season. So we are working to, with a couple of agreements and potentially some contracts, uh, to identify, uh, to, to bring on some local contractors to go out there and remove snow that's going to be leading into NSO survey areas, uh, into our reforestation units, uh, in the south of the district as well as our roadside hazard tree removal and fuels reduction projects along a lot of the Forest Service roads, but as well as, uh, county roads, uh, is, uh, I think, uh, Carol was talking about county roads. Another big one is agreements and contracts. So just continuing with that, we have multiple agreements going. Uh, one of those agreements is with TCRCD, uh, that has multiple projects into it. And I'm just going to mention a few of those because they, uh, pertain to what we're talking about. Uh, this agreement is going to, uh, do roadside hazard tree removal in county roads right of way. The right of way is not very large, so we'll be able to cover a number of miles to get those, some of those, uh, hazard trees down. The second component of that agreement is to do some NEPA planning to do an expansion project. So it's called the County Road Hazard Tree Expansion Project. Uh, and then we'll be able to go in there into those same, uh, miles and expand that hazard tree removal. And that will be on county roads specifically. Uh, so there's good work happening there. The we have a PG&E weather station that's getting permitted over on the Horse Ridge Lookout on South Fork Mountain. So this topic actually, I'm hoping to get, if there is any input from the collaborative folks, uh, please provide that um, at the end of this, uh, little presentation, but the weather station will be attached to a twenty-foot telephone pole, uh, that's going to be installed in previously disturbed soil on the administrative site. Uh, there's no vegetation at the site and no new roads are going to be developed for this. Work is anticipated to occur between September first and the end of December. Uh, and the permit is good for thirty years. So that's PG&E bringing in a weather site to, into the area just to expand that, uh, weather reporting capability. Um, and Kristen was curious if the collaborative had any concerns, uh, or further questions, uh, regarding this install. Larry?
I say big thumbs up for that one. We need it. That's a big blind spot down there.
Excellent. Thanks for the feedback. Anybody else on that one? Okay. Thank you. Uh, going back to grants and agreements, this might be too more, too much information, uh, for you all. Let me know if it is, but something, another new development that we have is a match reduction uh, on these agreements. So typically in the past, a number of the, the forms of agreements have had a twenty percent match requirement on it. There is a process that's still being developed by the regional office that's going to allow us to request, well, for our partners to request a match reduction down to five percent, which would have to be signed off on by Jennifer Eberlin, the Regional Forester. So just keep that in mind as you're entering these agreements, uh, that the process isn't fully developed yet. I've talked to a few of our partners about it and what I'm hearing, but things are liable to change at any time, uh, regarding this one. But it will help out a lot because we, as y'all know, we have a lot of, uh, disaster funding, a lot of Earl funding coming our way. So to be able to reduce that match is just going to allow us to enter into more agreements and do more work in a collaborative manner, uh, with our partners. So uh, if you're not tracking that, please do so and, uh, and, and see what you could do about getting that applied to any agreements you're working on. Last thing is the YCC. So on our district, we have, uh, some rec staff for the first time in a number of years. Jim Bees are, uh, who is soon to be our GS eleven rec, uh, uh, officer. He's, uh, he's, one of the first things he's done is to seek funding through our Trinity County Rack. So thank you to the Rack folks, uh, who have, uh, supplied a year's worth of funding to, for that YCC group. So it's been a number of years since we've had a YCC on district. Uh, they are, we're currently reaching out to the local, uh, folks to see if there's any interest. And we are looking to have that from up and running this, this spring slash summer. Uh, there might be a few things I've missed, but that's about the, the head, uh, highlights that I can see in front of me. Uh, does anyone get questions?
Well, thank you, Lejean. Yeah. Any questions out there? I know Kelly's got one here.
I do. Um, I know that there's, with the, the priority landscapes and all the excitement of the new money coming in, uh, one thing that I didn't hear today was an announcement that, uh, we also received joint, the, the joint chiefs award, um, for the, the coming three years. Uh, anybody on, before, I, I see nobody from the NRCS here, but I'm sure they would have brought it up. Uh, anybody on the Forest Service side that would like to speak to that?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Uh, we did receive the Joint Chiefs Award. We were surprised because we were getting messaging that, uh, the Earl was replacing Joint Chiefs. So, uh, it kind of came out of left field for us. Currently, when, when we produce that, and thank you, Kelly, because I think you originally produced the first document for that third round of funding. And then, uh, Watershed Center and Randy Paris, uh, chimed in and, uh, came around when they, uh, when we redid it. So the two of you really were instrumental in giving that, uh, that proposal put together for us. Um, right now, that has just about all the existing NEPA we have on district included in it. Uh, and what, because we have a lot of August disaster funding and Earl funding focused in other footprints, our plan is to utilize the, that money on areas outside of those two footprints, uh, adjacent to, but outside. Uh, largely focused on fuels reduction. There's also some, uh, in the proposal, some oak woodlands restoration. Uh, but it's largely, uh, focused on the wooey, uh, areas as, as closely as possible. Um, that's what Mad River is, uh, planning currently. We haven't finalized our plan on what agreement or contract we're gonna pursue to, to implement those, uh, dollars, to obligate and implement those dollars. But, uh, in the next week or two, that's gonna kind of get sorted out. Tara might have a different, uh, response to what she plans to do with her Joint Chiefs portion.
We'll have to follow.
I see a question from Carol, though.
Yeah, we'll have to follow up with Tara. I think she's popped off the call.
All right, Carol.
So, um, last collaborative, um, Kristen had a question about expanding the wooey and we were kind of trying to resolve that, you know, by, um, you know, clarifying, you know, that it could include access roads and things like that. Did you guys ever get that figured out, you know, in terms of, um, matching the wooey to where you want to do the work?
Thanks for the question. It's an ongoing discussion that's gotten elevated. So there's a bit of confusion here because for that, uh, that funding, it, you're, it, it it calls into, uh, consideration both the wooey and the NPL boundary line and technically the fire scape, uh, the fire sheds. So three different boundary lines are coming into play. Uh, it specifically says it needs to be within wooey. Uh, but there, and then it needs to also be related to the NPL line. So we are working to both expand the NPL line. Well, excuse me, not both, but we're trying to expand the NPL borderline and our forest supervisors are, uh, working on that part of it. So they want to get an assessment from the districts, uh, the needs within those NPLs. Uh, and then they want to run some modeling. Uh, I, I'm gonna have to be vague there because I don't know what model they're running. But they want to run some modeling to see how that, uh, uh, relates to the wooey and, uh, the priorities listed in that, uh, legislation. Um, with regards to the wooey components of it and the fire, uh, kind of Fire Safe Council, I think the answer that we received at that meeting was that, uh, if we list it as a project that, uh, will benefit the wooey, then it's still applicable. And so we were kind of running with that. So I think we're covered on the wooey front. It's just that NPL boundary line that we need to push out at this point.
And for those of us that don't know, NPL stands for National Public Lands or?
National Priority Landscapes.
Okay, Priority Landscapes, okay.
So I think there's twenty-one that have been identified by the Washington Office, the original ten, and then they added eleven, uh, with the Earl funding.
Great.
Earl legislation, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Lejean, for your update. Any other questions? Follow up for Lejean?
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
It's like we have a timely guest coming on.
Okay, yeah, it looks like, uh, we are wrapping up our forestry update, so we're gonna move on to the, uh, update on illegal grows. And I believe we may have Tim Saxon, uh, calling in. Did I see that? Uh, oh, there he is. Tim, you with us?
Perfect timing, Tim.
Yeah, that was perfect. Wow.
How do I know? Sometimes I'm incredible, huh?
You walk on water.
I'm not gonna go that far, but thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, thank you very much for inviting me to, to join the meeting today. Um, some of the, uh, let me, uh, let me turn something off here because I keep getting a beeping thing here. Uh, I apologize for that. Let me turn that off. Okay. Yeah, I, I apologize for not being able to join the last couple of meetings. Uh, we've had a lot of things going on over here at the Sheriff's Office. Giving an update on some of the things that we've been doing with regard to cannabis eradication, uh, for two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we've seen a really, um, incredible shift in what we've been able to see, uh, over the last several years. Uh, for example, uh, our public lands, uh, eradication, uh, National Forest Trespass Site. So we were only able to, uh, go into two different sites last year. And we eradicated three hundred and thirty-six plants. That is a radical shift from what we've seen in the past, and these were late season grows that we went into. Uh, the total processed marijuana that we found and destroyed, uh, from public lands was twenty-two hundred pounds. Uh, and the arrests were two that we were able to do last year. Both of those were federally prosecuted. Let me give you some numbers that from, um, private land search warrants that we served last year, sixty-two on private land. Total marijuana plants eradicated from private land was two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty plants. Total processed marijuana destroyed from private lands, forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-six pounds. Concentrated cannabis destroyed, uh, one hundred and sixty ounces, uh, extraction labs seized, uh, were two. We seized forty-eight firearms, uh, six of those were stolen. Uh, criminal citations and DA filings were fifty-three and total value of assets that we seized was five hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. We're looking at this from the situation, what, what, what we're evaluating is the fact that there's dramatic shift from public land to private land is the fact that, um, district attorneys are not, um, shall we say, as, uh, rambunctious to file and, and take a lot of these cases to court and prosecute, um, as the, um, uh, district courts are with regard to the federal violations. So I think we're seeing a shift in what these drug trafficking organizations are starting to do. They're, they're realizing, wow, if we're growing on public lands, we get caught, we get arrested. The feds are going to prosecute us. And so they're shifting to going to, into, uh, private lands where they can assess and, in essence, do the same type of operations, but if they get caught, all they're really losing is their plants. Um, because they know if, if in fact they do go to court, um, a lot of the DAs are merely charging them with misdemeanor violations, um, and they know that they'll most likely get deferred entry judgment. And they know that they'll most likely get deferred entry judgment. They'll get. Probation, and if they keep their nose clean for a year, they're basically out with no. With no record and they pay a fine. And in essence, they've gone on to their other operations or they're growing somewhere else. And chances are, because here in the North State, we have limited resources. We're probably not gonna catch their second, third, or fourth real site. This past year, we have some new Forest Service Supervisors and Six Rivers and Shasta Trinity. I've met with them. We're we're forming some new alliances, some new. New game plans on some things. I'm really excited about the the new. Thought processes that we have. We're engaged in trying some new things to. Repair some of the past issues that that we've had. I want to reiterate that the the relationships that we have with Forest Service law enforcement officers on the on the ground. Have been nothing but fantastic. We've always got along. We've had great. Working relationships. They've they've always helped us out. We've helped them out. And I think I've talked about it before, where some of those relationships have been strained at at upper levels. And we've been working on those, but we're going to be working on some additional operations this year. They're in the planning stages, along with Humboldt Sheriff's Office, Mendocino Sheriff's Office. Fish and Wildlife Forest Service and California National Guard. Have all confirmed the availability of staff and equipment for mutual aid. We've even reached out so far as Buick County and Siskiyou County and Shasta County. To get their assistance to help us out with different operations that we're looking at right now. What has been frustrating for us, though, is. The federal government with regard to some of their surveillance equipment, especially their airplanes. As they continue to look at decertifying and retiring some of the aircraft that we've relied on for years. For for surveillance. And it's incredibly frustrating. It's not just for us, though. It's it's across, especially the Western states, and the sheriffs have have. Express that frustration up to the federal level, but to no avail. Instead, the federal government continues to rely on the fact that, well, we've got drones that can do these operations. Well, they can't do it the same as. Staffed aircraft can with with real eyes in those aircraft. So that's been incredibly frustrating for us. But. We're also looking at some other things. We've we've got a coalition of sheriffs here in the North State. Buick County, Lake County, Mendocino, Humboldt, and myself. Where we're also working on some other joint operations to to look at some of the human trafficking, labor trafficking, and sex trafficking operations that often. Go on with some of these illegal grow sites. And we're working together attacking these issues from another. Avenue. And I know Trinity County, we recently filed a human trafficking case. That's currently going through Trinity County, and we're we're kind of excited about this because this is just another way to go after some of these drug trafficking organizations. To try and shut them down and get them out of California. So. That pretty much concludes my report. So unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you, Tim. Any any questions for Tim? See one for Carol? Go ahead, Carol.
So so I understand the shift from public to private lands due to the difference in prosecution. That makes a lot of sense. But I guess my question is, so the lower number of. Kind of. Grows that you've been able to find on public land, you know, do you feel confident that you are finding them? Or that, you know, that that's, you know, just the tip of the iceberg kind of thing?
That's a good question, Carol, and and I think it's a combination of a lot of different factors. We have limited resources. And a lot of those limited resources come from the fact that we're unable to get to them on the ground. And those limited resources are also a direct correlation to not having the surveillance capability of getting up to the air. We have one airplane here in Trinity County that we utilize. That's to the sheriff's office. And we have limited flight time on that. We also have, we we have the capability to contract with other air resources. Here in Northern California. But last year, we also had a lot of fires in the North State and around California. And anytime you have fires, those limited helicopter and aircraft resources that we contract with are also contracted by. Other entities around the state. And when you have those emergency services, those air resources go to those different locations. So we can't have access to them. I think that's one thing as well. And then I mentioned the fact that. Forest Service helps us out quite often, but they are also struggling with staffing shortages as well, just like we are. So many times, and I think I've talked about this before, but when we go to service search warrant in certain areas, we have to have. Certain staffing levels to be able to do these operations. And we rely tremendously on allied agencies to help us out. Number one being Forest Service, number two being Fish and Wildlife. And then our brothers and sisters in allied sheriff's offices. And so if we. Go to establish an operation and they don't have available resources, then we can't go in and do those things. But. To get back to your main question, it's it's a surveillance and and being able to go out and and find the locations. But that's what we were able to find last year. Also looking at the fact that, you know, we had fires as well that we had to take care of and protect people and property.
So I know, you know, our congressional representatives have been trying to find funding. I'm not sure the status of that. But is there anything the collaborative can do if the issue is the resources for surveillance? You know, once you find them, you're you're hopefully getting the prosecutorial support you need. But if the question is. The resource issue is surveillance. I mean, is there something the collaborative can do to help?
You know, I I appreciate that. And I think when when we get to that level, I would definitely reach out to you. And ask for your assistance. Unless you can figure out a way to get the, you know, the the federal government to tell the Air Force to keep a certain aircraft flying. Which so far, you know, at the presidential level, they're not ordering the Air Force to keep these airplanes flying. I I don't know what else could be done. We. I don't know how to put. It's California laws that have really, I think, changed some of the direction here. Again, the Eastern District. Of the US Courts that we that we deal with, that would that would prosecute. Anything that we find on federal lands have been great. They prosecute the cases. And I think what's. That's part of the issue that these DTOs are looking at is if they get caught on federal lands, they're being prosecuted to the fullest extent of the laws. California's changing legislation has deemed that, I mean. A hundred thousand plants, basically. Well, we're gonna prosecute you for growing over six plants. That's a misdemeanor. So you get fined, you pay your fine, and we're gonna put you on deferred entry judgment, which means if you don't do anything bad for a year. Then you pay your fine and and you're done. And so that's why they're continuing to to go towards private land grows now.
Okay, thanks a lot, Tim. You're doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I, you know, I just direct them and it's it's the minimum amount on the ground that are doing the work. So we we have to, we have to give them kudos, and I I do that every day.
Hey, Tim, I do have one other question. At our January collaborative meeting, we did have Matt Swanson, the LEO for Shasta Trinity National Forest, did give us a little bit of. A report out and he he is, it was something of note to me because we've gotten these reports from you all, you know, over the years. And it seemed to me that when he reported out that there were, you know, there were only three trespass grow sites on, you know, on public land. You you're you were announcing two today. Are they are those the same or were the those in addition to the three that they had?
These are the numbers that I got from my drug task force coordinator.
Okay.
So I don't know what Matt was reporting these. I asked for the stats from twenty twenty-two, so I don't know what Matt's stats were. He may have been giving you fiscal year stats. I asked for calendar year stats from my staff.
Yeah, just meant twenty twenty-two also, but I I don't, you know, kind of how much that.
And well, yeah.
Past October, you know.
So, yeah, and that's, that's a difference apples and apples. So I I asked for twenty twenty-two. So I think my staff gave me from January to December. Matt may have been doing fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Okay, understood. Okay, I I just, and you know, I guess the other thing was that is a pretty radical shift. I mean, you know, in years past, we would, we would have seen a lot more, you know, of these trespass grows. Getting mitigated on on public lands. So that that's, that's very interesting to me.
Exactly. And that's, you know, I I confirmed with with my narcotics detective. I said, you know, four years ago, these numbers were exactly opposite.
Yeah, yeah, wow. Very interesting.
All right, any other questions for Tim?
Yeah, thanks, Tim. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tim.
Okay, you're welcome. If there's nothing else I need to jump off, I got a couple more calls to make.
All right, thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything that your group is doing as well. So thank you. I'm glad we work together on many of these projects.
You bet.
All right, take care. Bye.
Right, thanks, Tim.
Okay, we also have Six Rivers under this agenda item. Lejean, did you have any contribution to this illegal grow subject matter?
No, I would have to defer to Seth, who is our hello here, excuse me, our. Informal LEO, so.
What's his name, Lejean?
Sorry, it's just slipping my mind, Seth. Seth Thorpe. It's, see, I'm gonna, I'll just put it in the chat. Spell it right.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you for providing that. I could I could potentially do a direct outreach to him. If and and see if there's anything more that he would have to report for for Trinity County.
Okay, that wraps up our illegal grow discussion there. So we're gonna move on to other items, partner updates. First up, we have the Rec Committee. I know we were unable to meet with the Rec Committee last Friday due to weather and. Power outages. We did get the Minersville update earlier today in the meeting. Are there any other Rec Committee members on that would like to contribute to an update from the Rec Committee? Seeing none. Kelly, anything you wanted to?
No, I mean, Minersville was like the the biggest item that we had hoped to discuss at that meeting. And with the power outage, there was no way for us to host that meeting. So I guess I would, since we're on here, I would, I guess, ask. Is this something? Carol, that maybe are we wanting to reschedule that meeting?
Well. If we could just get maybe an update from Sarah on where we're at with the Bowerman Foundation, the RAC funding. Then that was my only other real question.
All right, Sarah, are you able to address that question?
Muted.
Yep, there you go.
No, I'm not able to address that question, but I can get back to you via email once I get an answer.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That was that was my main question. Yeah, and then the CEO, the campground concessionaire status. I mean, do you know if we're we're kind of moving forward with picking the concessionaire?
Yes, that process is complete. It is Vista Recreation, which is the new parent company of SRC. So they're a large concessionaire that purchased our C. We received two proposals during that process. One from, well, the Vista, and then one proposal from. A National Park Concessionaire in Central California that didn't seem to quite. Meet some of the criteria we were looking for, so.
Okay, well, then, thanks, thanks, Sarah. With with that. Status report, I think we're okay to, you know, just have a regular recreation committee meeting in a couple months.
Okay.
All right.
Unless Ross has some other input.
Ross is still on.
Ross, are you with us?
Well, yes, I'm with you, but I have nothing.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Carol. Thanks, Ross. RCD, that would be me today. So. I've been working with Kelly McElroy on the. With, you know, Shasta Trinity National Forest on a. Stewardship agreement. It would sort of supersede or or, you know, take. Kind of precedence over our master agreement, our master participating agreement that we have with the Shasta Trinity. And this particular agreement would actually be across boundary, as I understand it. It's gonna basically include Six Rivers. As well as the Shasta Trinity National Forest. The difference, but but with this particular agreement, and I understand that they're also working on one, if it's already not in. And and executed, they're working on one with the Waterships Research and Training Center as well. That would be. Instead of having supplemental participating agreements and other agreements that are essentially full-blown agreements and and take some. You know, some significant effort to get through grants and agreements to help streamline the process. Of of bringing, you know, the. The primary landscape funding. You know, into, you know, agreements and allocating those funds with both RCD and the Watershed Center. This will help to allow us to have simple, relatively simple modifications. To that stewardship agreement. To allow us to, you know, basically put money into agreements more more readily and more and more easily as 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 I understand it. So this is something that's, you know, in development, and the last I spoke with Kelly McElroy, she was hoping to have that. Stewardship agreement for the RCD into the grants and agreements office at the region. By the end of this month, in order to expedite, you know, some of these allocations to, you know, be. Put forth into new agreements, you know, from the land priority landscape with funding as well as, you know. Any of the other partnership opportunities that we have with either of those forests. So that's pretty exciting. Lejean had mentioned a specific agreement that's gonna be a standalone that we've already sort of gotten down the road a little bit further. And so we're gonna put that one through. And then and then with the stewardship agreement, we'll be we'll be moving forward. With a number of other. Projects as we're as we're, as as that funding, you know, becomes available. So. That's a pretty big, exciting thing for us. We, I guess, got our crews finally with, you know, the weather, you know, sort of opening up this week. We put on, we had two crews that were on, but. On staff that were working in February and a little bit, well, not really at the beginning of this month, but January, February. We had a couple of crews on. We put on two more fuels reduction crews as of this week. And so we're back up to full capacity. We're working on specifically our fire, our cow fire. Forest Health. Agreement, funding, working out in low elevations at this point out in Indian Creek. So in the Indian Creek area. And we're doing some additional workout on BLM lands out that way. And. As far as what is a interest of interest to this group. I do know that Greta Van Gert from IERC, I believe, had received. They received another. Rose site cleanup grant from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I think we're, we've been in discussion with them. And, uh, I think we're, we've been in discussion with, uh, them about supporting their roadside cleanups. Um, uh, going into this next year, um, so that, that will likely happen, uh, us providing uh, capacity for doing the actual work and and people and bodies to, to, to do the work on the ground. Uh, so that's, uh, kind of in the works and related to some of our topics today. And I think that as all, I'll probably report out for today. I think that's kind of the big news at this point. We just submitted a, and and we just submitted a new Cal Fire Fire Prevention Grant that is gonna total out to a little over three million dollars, uh, and we'll keep it posted on how how that progresses. That went into, uh, their, their, um, grant opportunity closed as of Wednesday this, uh, earlier this week, so, um, let's see. See how that goes. And a big, and a significant portion of, of that is gonna be education outreach, uh, Fire Safety Council coordination and and a full-blown C W P P update, uh, for twenty twenty five. So, um, a- as well as a couple million dollars worth of, of, you know, actual implementation work, mastication and and manual, uh, work. So, um, I'll, I'll keep it to that.
All right, Kelly, thank you. Any questions for Kelly? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the Watershed Research and Training Center.
Randy's still on.
Is Randy prepared to give an update for the Watershed Center? Maybe Randy's not with us anymore.
I don't know, Randy Paris, are you still there? See your number.
Multitasking, I suspect.
I can. Because she's asking. I, uh, I, I muted you, Randy, by the way. There was some noise coming in on your line, so I muted you. Unmuted phone calls.
Okay, Randy may have stepped away. So we will move on. Are there any other updates or reports that members would like to provide at this time? Carol's shaking her head no. Okay, not seeing any others. We are gonna move to concluding business, public input, anybody, uh, from the public out there wanting to contribute? Seeing none.
If, if, if Randy is trying to get unmuted, it's a star six to toggle mute, unmute on your phone. Star six.
Hello.
Circle back to Randy.
I apologize for that. I did not realize the mute, unmute button wouldn't work, um. So we are working on the same types of agreements that, uh, Kelly mentioned, uh, with both the Shasta Trinity and the Six Rivers. Um, in a lot of cases, the agreements are being structured to cover both forests. Uh, for both, um, disaster funding and, um, the new priority landscape funding. So I, I won't belabor that point, but, um, we are working closely with the Forest Service on that. Um, we also have a new agreement with the Bureau of Land Management to, um, do some implementation around Hay Fork and work cooperatively with the R C D. Um, primarily with our masticator, and so we have a program of operations this year where we'll be working around, uh, Ewing Reservoir, um, on the B L M lands. Um, in some cases, the treatments are maintenance treatments, so they were treated back in, um, the early, uh, tens, uh, like two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Um, but our recreation department's also doing some trail work with B L M. And so we'll be doing fuel reduction, um, with the trail work. And then ultimately, that agreement will facilitate the Watershed Center working with B L M on planning to cover the parcels in the Hay Fork Valley. Um, with, uh, N I P A for fuels reduction. So that's kind of an exciting development and had a great meeting with Rob Winkler and his replacement. Um, at least temporarily, uh, the gentleman's name is Garrett Dunn. Um, you know, as folks know, I think Rob got a promotion, so they've been working to fill his vacant position, um. And then, you know, there's always a lot of proposals happening. Um, the Community Wildfire Defense Grant, um, program that the Forest Service is standing up, um, still hasn't, uh, announced, uh, who got those awards. And there were three proposals that were submitted that cover parts of Trini County. Um, one was done in cooperation with the Humboldt County R C D. Both the Trini County R C D and the Watershed Center participated in the development of that proposal. And then, um, the area around Hyampom and the area around Junction City, Weaverville and Douglas City were, um, another two proposals that the Watershed Center put in. And I've been variously talking about these, but I just wanted to give folks an update, um, that we haven't heard. So, um, but great news about the Joint Chiefs. I think we were all surprised about that. And I, I think that's, that's pretty much it, um, we, uh, you know, this is kind of outside of my program area, but I know that, um, you know, we have, uh, youth conservation crews um, forming for both, uh, the Hay Fork area and the Weaverville area. So, um, Jack and the restoration, um, excuse me, the recreation program is, uh, starting to work on outreach for those youth crews, and I'm sure news will be coming out as they make progress, um, and, uh, re, uh, getting those crews organized. So I think that's about it. So thank you guys very much for the opportunity to update the collaborative.
All right, thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy? Jerry, 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 yep.
Uh, I, I might have missed it, but, uh, how much was Joint Chiefs funding this time?
Randy, do you have that number?
I think it was about nine million for the Forest Service side of things. Um, and then I think Kelly has a better line on maybe what N R C S, um, has gotten funded through Joint Chiefs.
Was it, I, 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 somebody had said something to the effect of like four million total, but is that, so that, is that just for the first year then, maybe?
I think probably, um, I thought four million was the Six Rivers portion. Maybe if Lejean's still on the phone, he might have the best numbers out of all of us.
Yep, he, Lejean, do you happen to have?
He's gone.
No, he's, he's
I'm here, I'm here. Sorry, I'm just pulling up an email that, uh, we just got yesterday about this, uh. Let's see, I, I, don't take this to heart, what I'm seeing is that we have in our account right now is something on, uh, around three point one two four million. Uh, and that looks like it's for fiscal year twenty three.
So, no, just for that one year, wow.
The Joint Chiefs monies are on top of all the other infrastructure disaster relief bills. Plus the fifteen point nine million that just came into Forest Service for the fire shed monies. Is that right?
Uh, so, I mean, we have multiple funding sources available, uh, not every district is, uh, uh, pursuing all the different sources of money, but, uh, we have disaster funding for multiple fires from two thousand twenty, uh, and I believe twenty one. There's, so for us, that's August disaster funding, we have, uh, 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 an amount of, uh, other than that, you have bill, uh, by partisan infrastructure legislation. Uh, and that has, I don't even know how much money is associated with that, but we have not applied for any of that's right at this moment. And then there's Earl or slash IRA funding, and that's the, uh, uh, Inflation Reduction Act or Law, uh, that one, uh, again, has a a, 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 a larger number of, uh, amount of money than I can speak to, uh, but it is, uh, our primary vehicle for the next four years, uh, for Earl. Uh, disaster is pretty much spent up. It's been bivvied out, and we shouldn't rely on that past fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Um, bill funding may be around, I don't know, but Earl is the main, uh, vehicle going, uh, going forward.
Yeah, the, my comment wasn't just right to you, Lejean, just across both forests, which is lots and lots of money.
Oh, yeah, definitely. A little intimidating.
And to, yeah, to, to Randy's question, uh, my understanding is that the, the the N R C S portion of that, which is always smaller because we're, you know, it's, that money gets implemented on uh, private lands, uh, I think totaled something to the tune of a hundred and eighty nine thousand for this first, this first year. Um, so, and I, and I, that just gives them a lot of flexibility to, uh, you know, they don't have to put their equipped projects into the, the state hopper, you know, to, to compete against projects outside of the county, they, they can do an internal ranking and then, and then prioritize, uh, within the county itself.
Yeah, I believe, uh, Nick reported last meeting too, that the Watershed Center was pursuing funding on private lands as part of that Joint Chiefs, you know, initiative, so might be opportunity to collaborate there.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions for?
I, I had one last question. Amelia made an announcement at the, um, Fire Safe Council about the new district conservationist, and I wondered if Kelly wanted to, um, elaborate on whether or not that's what the case is.
Yeah, um, I, I can give you, it, it just reminds me of a couple of other things that are, I guess, specifically related. Um, with regard to the conservation planner position, uh, we, we have offered out the the, uh, position to uh, somebody who has lived in the R C D world and the N R C S world, um, over at the Honey Lake R C D, um, Kayla Myers, who has been living here, um, in Trinity County now for the past several years. Uh, she accepted the position, and so we have that, uh, position filled now. Um, the Fire Safe Council Coordinator position is still open. And, uh, we will be interviewing, uh, a very strong candidate for that on Monday. Um, so we hope to have that person in that position probably by April, uh, if everything goes smoothly. And then, um, I guess the other big piece of news is that, um, uh, Chris Cole, our program manager for Forest Health, has accepted a position as the district conservationist at the N R C S Field Office here in Weaverville. So we'll continue to be able to work with him, um, but in a different capacity. So we've, uh, we are flying that, um, that program, uh, manager position here at the district, um, this next week. Um, and we got some time because there's, the N R C S is a little, um, deliberate in their slaw boarding. So, uh, so we, we may get some good crossover towards the end of Chris's, uh, um, tenure here before he, he jumps, uh, over to the N R C S, um, depending on how our hiring process goes for, for that. Uh, the position that we are flying, uh, closes April third. Um, and we, we would hope to have somebody, uh, actually in the chair by either late, mid to mid to late April is what we're hoping for, so.
Thanks, Kelly.
Yep, actually, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That was, kind of actually, big, big ticket items for us here.
All right, we got a question from Ross.
Yeah, uh, this is for Sarah. I wonder when the, if the concessionaire is finally chosen, if we can get some contact information. Uh, I'd like to tout the four or five miles of trail that are out there already. More and more campers bring their bicycles along and let their kids ride up and down that trail. And that's, that's more every year, and they, uh, they don't care about the lake level. And, uh, that's never been advertised, you know, as the concessionaire, it's larger and larger. Trinity County becomes less and less important, but it is important to the restaurants and the businesses that are out there along the lake. So if we could get that information, we, we could send him a little something. And, and tout, and tout the, uh, for non-lake, lake users, you know, camp sites and stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, if, if you want to send that direct to me, I can get that to our concessionaire, and I can also get you the contact information for the concessionaire as well.
Oh, thank you.
All righty. I think that concludes our partner updates, so let's, uh, we already did public input, let's move on to our facilitation team. I think we've got our marching orders relative to the, uh, restructuring, uh, so we'll, we'll get to work on that, uh, after this meeting and get some out to all of you here fairly soon. Anything else, Kelly, that we wanted to?
Uh, no, I just would say that, uh, since Tara's hopped off the call, I will connect with her. Um, about both the April twenty first field tour planning and then anything else that we may need, you know, between now and then. Um, you know, if, if, if we're gonna shoot either for that first Friday or some other date, um, it'll obviously be somewhat weather dependent to get over to Hyampom, and I know that's her priority, um, so, uh, we'll, we can coordinate that unless there's any other comments from this group about, uh, prioritization of, of, uh, field tours coming up.
Any feedback on field tours?
I will say that it was, um, recommended that we look into the potential of having, uh, if we're gonna continue with like hybrid meetings that the, um, the new Ranch Rio facility, um, basically has a very good conference room with apparently some reliable technology. I haven't had the opportunity yet to follow that thread, but that is something on my list of things to do, so I'll try and make sure to do that. Um, prior to any, uh, of our upcoming, uh, upcoming business meetings, I guess you could say. Uh, that would be it for me.
Okay. And again, I think we all understand that Hyampom is the priority for the April twenty first field tour.
Yes, and Carol did mention in the chat, uh, she had made a request to get, um, Joe Rodarms', um, presentation, um, so I will work to acquire that and then share that out both to the group and get it posted on the website.
Very good. Leads us to agenda building.
With regard to agenda building, there was a couple items from the last, uh, from the January uh, meeting that we didn't feel like we could address in a timely fashion for this particular meeting. Uh, one of which was a more generalized discussion about, um, mortality, uh, tree mortality specifically, and, um, and uh, one of the things that was also brought up in that was like, you know, what, what Caltrans might be doing to address the amount of, um, down, you know, fuels along the highway corridors. So is my intent to, uh, get ahold of, uh, Tom March at the, um, at Caltrans and inquire about whether he might be able to give us a little presentation or a report out. Um, maybe at this, uh, this next, uh, May meeting. Um, and is that something that, that, that we, I, I haven't really posed that as a, an option, like when I speak with Tara, I could probably talk to her a little bit about that, uh, more globally too, because obviously there's you know, what we can see, but there's obviously all the stuff that we can't see, and whether, whether there's a, I think the intent was that to find out whether there was a, a plan on the land managers and the things to, to address the, the more, the tree mortality that we're, that we're in, in experiencing here in Trinity County. Um, so, uh, my intent was to put that on the next agenda, does that sound? I see a thumbs up from Carol there. And then, um, there was one other piece that we, there was four items on that list that I didn't notice. There may have been one other item on that list that I'll revisit and, um, and, and put on there also. Is there anything from this group, uh, that we would like to prioritize for the May meeting?
Well, an, another update on the Minersville Boat Ramp, which hopefully the Recreation Committee will have that the week before, but, um, I'm just concerned that it's dropping behind again.
Okay, all right. We'll definitely take that up with the rec committee and if there's good, uh, good word, we'll bring it, bring it to the group. Any, any other items? Hearing none?
Yeah, all right. We're not seeing any additional, uh, agenda items, uh, so I believe that's a wrap. So thank you all for your presence and participation contributions today. We've got our, uh, meeting schedule, uh, down there at the bottom of the agenda. So it looks like April 21st will be the next opportunity for those who are gonna participate in the planned scheduled field visit, field tour.
And May 19th will be our, our next, um, full collaborative group meeting and I'll keep everybody posted as far as the venue. And if, it, it sounds like we've got the marching orders to keep it, uh, as, as a, a standing Zoom meeting. Um, and so that'll be certainly our go-to, um, but if we can, if I get any good information or have some level of confidence in potentially doing a, a hybrid meeting, uh, we, we might pursue that as well. We'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank you all again.
Thanks, everybody.
See you next time.
Thank you. Thanks, Kenneth.
Twenty minutes to spare, wow.
Well, yeah, I, I wasn't sure. I, I was just grouping, you know, what I figured.